I'd like to call our board meeting to order. We always start with a roll call. Ms. D'Angelo.
Mr. Payant.
Here.
Mrs. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Katouli.
Here.
Mr. Forhan.
Here.
Mrs. Hill.
Here.
Now that we are all here, I need to have an adoption of our agenda. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
No, I moved, we adopted as is.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. We're now on to our workshop, and we're going to start with an Employee of the Year. And I believe it is going to be a Dr. Pulver and Andrea Reed Show, or just one, or?
Both.
Both, okay.
You can join us too, this Madam President.
You want me to?
I do.
Okay.
Good afternoon. It is such a wonderful day in May to do so many celebrations, both at this portion of the meeting and our 6:00 PM meeting. But right now, I would like to call up our amazing Employee of the Year, Ms. Evan Grandin. It's a good round of. So Evan Grandin has just been an extraordinary teacher. When you think about, you know, Mrs. Reed at one of our events recently really talked about the profession of teaching. And I think the consummate professional, Evan, you really represent that. She's been with our district for 23 years, nine years at Weaver Elementary, and she was an extraordinary reading teacher, mostly teaching at the primary grades. Coatsen Fellow Teacher, who Coatsen really takes a look at some of the best teachers and how do we make them even better, really focus on the art and science of teaching. We actually used some of her videos when she was in Coatsen. She now knows this, but some small group lessons where she was leading, we use that in some of our demonstration lessons when we're hiring administrators, so to see, you know, what kind of feedback our administrators would give a great teacher. And then, you know, our assistant soup at that time of Ed Services, Dr. Mark Johnson, had this idea of how can we really help support reading at the middle school level, particularly students who are below grade level? And so let's take an extraordinary reading teacher and let's try something different. And so she said yes, where she was a TOSA, a Teacher on Special Assignment, and then a sixth-grade core teacher at the middle school, at Oak Middle School, but really targeting students who were struggling with reading and trying to get them up. How many grade levels could we improve their reading scores? She's a reading expert, so from there, we had the need to really expand our reading labs, as Marcia Fries was getting ready to soon retire, as well as really just providing exceptional coaching and support for some of our new teachers, but all of our, many of our elementary teachers as well in the realms of reading. And so she's been a TOSA for us for nine years. She's the consummate professional, as I shared. And I think, what does it mean to be a professional? One of the things is this ongoing commitment to your craft, and to learning, and to deepening your thinking, and to research. And so she's always trying to figure out how she can be a better teacher, how we can help improve outcomes for students, and she's just exceptional. And so I'm so pleased that we're able to recognize Evan tonight as our 2024 Employee of the Year.
You know, I've really been fortunate to have Evan on my team now for close to a decade. And I think we have, we have so many amazing teachers, I can't even like quantify that term. And when we talk about a profession, I really do believe that teachers in our school district, this isn't a job they show up to, but it truly is a career and a profession that they work hard at. And a couple of key characteristics that come to mind about Evan that really make her stand out is, one is courage. So it's not just about having courage in your classroom, but courage when leading adults. And that's really hard here. Our teachers are really smart, they're demanding, and they have a lot of questions. And that's what makes them excellent educators, is they instill that same level of critical thinking with their students. But to stand on the other side of that and lead teachers takes a lot of courage. And so I really applaud her for being willing to step up and say, hey, I might not be the expert, because she'll tell me that all the time, but I'm willing to try, I'm willing to learn, and I'm willing to put something out there so we can continue to move forward for kids. I admire that every day. And the other thing that I really admire is her lack of fear to fail. And I think we talk about that all the time inside our classrooms, and we try to instill that in kids. And it's really hard to model as an adult, because the older you get, I think the harder it is to accept failure as really the opening of a door instead of the closing of a door. But she's willing to step up on the team and constantly try new things with us. That might fail, right? Reading Labs, and we started those together a decade ago, those could have failed. We would have never known a decade later they'd be thriving on all of our elementary school campuses. We're making a huge shift right now in our district to the science of reading, and the choices we're making for kids. We might fail this first time out the door, and we might look back and be like, wow, I wish you would have done that differently, but you do it with your full heart. And I just really admire the way you show up to work every day and are willing to take those risks and chances for kids. So just thank you for showing every day with the courage, and then just ambition to like, not worry about failing. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna speak as, I'm not a teacher. It's too hard. But I'm a mom and a grandma. And I have been so fortunate that my kids learn to read. And when I first heard like, oh, well, they can sound out the sounds, but they can't comprehend. And then I'm sitting there, not comprehending how you can sound the sounds and not understand what you're reading. And if you do not read fairly well in our society, you are stymied. You are never really gonna go forward. If you can't read, you can't write. And you have to communicate with people, whether it's emails or whatever. You have to have those skills. So you are taking challenges and turning them into successes, and supporting all of our classroom teachers to have successes in their classroom, so that all of our students thrive. And it is just, I'm gonna break this. It is just phenomenal. And I so admire your skills and your capabilities and your dedication. I don't have any of those things, and I'm so glad we have you, so that you can bring it to all the kids in Los Al. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to present you with our Los Alamitos Unified School District Employee of the Year to Evan Grandin as our TOSA. And we also have a certificate for you. And I just really, once again, wanna thank you for everything that you do, and will continue to do for our district.
Hold up, Mr. Forhan has something special for you too. And that was all great, and I believe that this is her third medal.
Oh, wow, a lot of medals, isn't it?
Yeah.
And had I been smart, I would have kept track of what stickers I put on him. But this one still makes a difference. She makes a difference in all kids, so congratulations.
Thank you so much. Wow, thank you. This is, I'm a short person, I have to put it down a little bit. Thank you so much to the Board and our Executive Cabinet for this huge honor. And thank you to my family for showing up here today. And to, oh, introduce them. I have my mother, Fay Itaya, who's here. My Auntie Lynn, who is an administrator in Garden Grove School District, who kind of helped me on my path. And my son, Jack Grandin, who is a freshman at Edison. And luckily, Mrs. Kaminsky and her son Max came to join us today too. Thank you so much. So lucky for me. I think one of the best things, you see it on the board right there, it says Igniting Unlimited Possibilities, and that's our motto in Los Al. And I didn't realize when I said yes to Mrs. Kaminsky 20 something years ago, that it would be Igniting Unlimited Possibilities or Opportunities for me. And so I'll just start off with the opportunities of our leadership here, right? And so I had a chance to work for and with Mrs. Kaminsky for many years, and she is the GOAT, just so you know, in this district, right? Like, she's legendary. And if you had a chance to work with Erin, you're really lucky, because she was the person that's gonna set high expectations for you. She's also gonna give you that chance to make mistakes and give you the grace to lick your wounds and figure out what's next, right? And so I really attribute that to being a big part of who I am today, Erin. So thank you so much. Our Ed Services team, you guys know who you are, always have my back, right? It's like, let's try this, or let's do this, or we need to go in this direction. And it takes a lot of, you know, it takes a lot of courage to like encourage somebody to do that work. So thank you so much for that. The mentorship that I've had the opportunity for in this district is amazing. I've got a chance to be, like you said, a Coatsen Fellow, and I learn from brilliant people in doing that work. I've had amazing teammates that I've worked alongside with, that I've learned from. Marcia Fries, another legend in our district, who started our reading labs, taught me so much that I know today. And then my fellow TOSSAs, who I follow their advice and help them, they help me to word my emails and say things in a very direct and positive and kind way. And lastly, to the Board and to our Cabinet, thank you so much for this opportunity to continue to allow me to study, right, this work of reading. It's, we're in this like kind of pendulum, right? And we're making these shifts. And to kind of stand in the middle and see things that have gone in the past and see where we're going next is exciting. My parents have always, you know, kind of instilled in me this ethic of hard work, right? You gotta work hard for things that you want. But when you're passionate about the things that we get to do every day, it hardly feels like working. So thank you so much for this honor, and I continue to wanna end my career here, okay? All right, cool.
We're gonna take pictures at the recess, so please stay for anybody who's being recognized.
We are now gonna do our Heroes of the Heart. Should I come back up?
Sure.
You could have done it from the podium, I'm sorry. I did bring the agenda here, just in case. Well, we are so fortunate to be able to recognize what we call here a district hero of the heart. All of our schools have heroes of the heart that they recognize at their school celebrations when they come to the Board. And then we get to do that as well, for someone who has really impacted the district in numerous ways. And so I'd like to call up Gerchi and Mohinda Sethi up to the podium, and then I'd like to share a few words about them, but let's have them come up as our Hero of the Heart. So if you haven't had a chance to meet the Sethi family, you are, you're missing out. They really are just an exceptional couple who go above and beyond and are so gracious and compassionate and generous, in spite of tragedy that has hit their life. And so they lost their son soon after he graduated from Los Alamitos High School. And they have really turned, I think a lot of us in life, we have options, and are we gonna turn pain into redemption, into somehow we can give glory to the struggles that have occurred? And so the Sethis certainly have done that. I would share, probably they've created a scholarship in the name of their son that benefits seniors that have probably been well over almost $50,000 since that has occurred. And, you know, a few years ago, it's amazing, sometimes you wonder, do you advertise it in newspapers? Does it still work? Do people notice it? Do they read? And LAFE advertised in the newspaper about the upcoming King and Queen Gala. And it was really about when we were trying to focus on mental health and building the well space at Los Alamitos High School. And that was a big fundraiser where LAFE helped us raise $250,000-ish to help build the well space. And so they saw the program in the newspaper and said, oh, we're gonna go to the event. So they came to the event and through Carrie and others speaking about the well space at Los Alamitos High School, they said, gosh, what can we do? We want to really support this work. And so through a great partnership with LAFE and the district, they, we had this vision of creating the space outside of the well space to create this outdoor garden. And so we said, well, that's gonna be Plan Two, Part Two. And they said, well, let us partner with you. And we said, we'd be happy to. And so they really did. They partnered with us, the district, through this process. As you guys know, we funded about $130,000, and the Sethi family donated just shy of $50,000, but it's way more than the dollars as well. They were partners with us every step of the way, with myself, with Mrs. Logue, with CJ, our Director of Facilities. So they, we took a look at, we used, I think, their landscape architect, someone that they have worked for in the past, to really help us kind of, we had several meetings looking at landscape drawings, and plants, and waterfalls, and this and that. And it was really about what was the space that we wanted for our kids? It wasn't something that they were trying to put upon with a goal that they had in mind. They just wanted to create this tranquil space for students. And so, you know, if you look at in totality, it's well over $100,000, almost $10,000, I think, that through their partnership with LAFE and with us, that they continue to donate to benefit students. And they just are an amazing family that we are so grateful. This well space is, we had the pleasure of dedicating it this fall, and immediately it's been one of the popular spaces for kids, to have this outdoor garden. And I love to see that our ceramics and other students are putting little ceramic structures and things there. And it's just good, how it's gonna be used by our students is just going to expand over time. And so we could not be more grateful and thankful to really be able to name Gertrude and Mohinder as our district hero of the heart.
Well, on behalf of all the students at Los Al High School, thank you for your very generous donation. And when I, I think when most people think of schools, you think of an enclosed area. You think of a classroom that hopefully will have a window, but not every classroom has a window. So you're in this cube. And I'm a native Californian, so maybe it's more personal to me. I have, I wanna see the outside. I wanna see nature. I wanna see the sky at some point during the day. And being a teenager can be hard, can be really challenging, and one day can really be almost too much for you. And you should know that on days when our students are having really challenging days, you will always find someone in that garden, sitting, taking a deep breath, looking at nature, thinking, okay, calculus isn't that bad. I can do this, you know? Or whatever they're stressing over. And it's very legitimate for them. And we need to support them as much as we can, so they can all succeed. And I am just so appreciative that you had that kind of a vision, where, and I know your son was really, loved the outdoors, and he, I'm sure he found peace there too, and you were trying to bring that part of him to the campus permanently. So just thank you so much. And so I have.
They're getting the jackets, if they know about.
Yeah, okay. So I have a certificate here on behalf of the district to thank you so much for what you're doing. And I don't know where the jackets are.
No, no, they're gonna try it on later.
On later, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I think.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Forhan.
Guess what?
Second one, right? Second one.
Second one, that's right. When we dedicated the space, we celebrated with ribbons, and you're still, you need to read that it says, "You Make a Difference Continuous." So thank you. Congratulations.
Well, thank you so much. This is really humbling, and such an honor to be here amongst you all. And as I was saying to Dr. Pulver, we seek no fame to our name ever. We don't do anything to get, you know, this kind of accolades for, but do it from our heart and do as we are guided. I don't think we as people can think of anything. I truly believe we get guided by some spirit, some energy that flows around us always. And we try to carry that forward and see how we can implement whatever that message is that comes to us. And being in nature, helping people, these were the key elements of my son as he was growing up. He was his, they were his characteristics, that he always, from his childhood, you know, he was a, as a little boy, as a middle schooler, I was driving on a Sunday afternoon home from across his school yard. And it was Sunday, but he says, stop, 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 Mom. And I stopped, and he saw one of his teachers carrying some boxes to the school. And he got out of the car, he wanted to go, and I didn't know what he was doing, but I waited, and he came back and he says, Mrs. so-and-so was carrying boxes, and I wanted to help her. So that's the soul, I, he always guides me to help and us, and we just bring that message out, and then the universe makes it happen. In this case, Carrie Logue. We mentioned to her, how about a garden? And she goes, sure, we'll talk about it. And the next thing we know is, we are all together in a room, and then we're talking landscape and architect. This honor, this reward, this award goes to all of you. It was a team effort, and we were, I believe, only a very, very minuscule, small part of it. And though we were a small part, it has inspired us to do more. And at this point, I just wanna offer, if we can do anything for any of the schools in the district, please let us know. We will love to participate and do our share. Thank you so much again. This is an honor that we will cherish for the rest of our lives, and thanks to you.
Mrs. Reed, would you like to come to the podium?
Thank you so much, President Katouli. It really is an exciting end of the year for so many reasons. But two of the reasons are really focused on our teachers, and I'd say really are at the heart of our district, when we talk about the individuals who show up every day and touch the lives of kids. And so I'm really pleased to be able to recognize two groups of teachers this afternoon. And so I'd like to start with recognizing our exemplary educators. And so these are the teachers who have been with us for five years and completed our five-year professional development plan. And so a lot of school districts don't have what I call an onboarding plan for teachers, but we really do believe in Igniting Unlimited Possibilities. And part of that is making sure that all of our teachers are equipped with best instructional practices, so that regardless of which classroom a child is placed into, they are really getting access to the highest quality of education. And so this five-year professional development plan includes training in our district signature practices, in-classroom coaching, as well as monthly new teacher modules for teachers who are in their first two years with us. And so I really do need to give a big shout out to Melissa Davis, our Director of Education Services, as well as Dr. Dan Bennett, our Director of Educational Technology, because they also help implement this TK through 12th grade professional development plan for our teachers. And then, in addition to bringing in outside facilitators that might be experts, we also have three in-house TOSSAs. We were able to recognize Mrs. Grandin as our literacy trainer and coach earlier, but we also have Mrs. Jill Cruz, who's our CGI math trainer and coach, as well as brand new to our team this year, Laura Trotter, who is, focuses on emotional intelligence and student behavior management inside our classrooms with our TK VIII new teachers. And so this team, along with experts that we bring in from outside, really help bring a plethora of trainings, professional learning, a focus on pedagogy, but really, I think, more than anything, an opportunity to exist as a cohort. So when you come to us in your first year, you're in a year-one cohort with teachers TK XII, and that cohort really progresses together through the five-year journey. And so it allows our teachers to really collaborate and get to know each other across school sites, as well as across the district, which is also something I think that makes it really special to work in a unified school district. Our kids come through one pathway, and our teachers getting to check in on kids they've had previously, I think is just, it's a real bonus that really helps, I think, our school district feel like the classroom is a home away from home for our students. And so I'd like to start today just by recognizing those teachers who are completing their five-year journey with us. And so I'd like to welcome at first Sarah Lee from Hopkinson Elementary School. Perfect. Jenna Akins from Weaver Elementary School. Melissa Burns, Los Alamitos Elementary School. Mr. Matthew Maya, Oak Middle School Science. Kaitlin Kite, Oak Middle School Science. Sydney Stewart, McCullough Middle School Science. Frank Fontaine, McCullough Instrumental Music. Katie Kelly, Los Alamitos High School, World Language Spanish. Tanil Bennett, Los Alamitos High School, World Language, American Sign Language. Thank you so much for your dedication these past five years. It's been lovely seeing you guys grow up as teachers in the district. Some of you had many years before you came to us, and still jumped on and were very celebratory about the process, and some of you started your career here, including student teaching. So thank you and congratulations.
Hold on.
Oh.
On behalf of the Board of Education, you're not getting a medal. You're getting something better. You're getting, you are awesome, you should win. And that's a dragon.
Has our budget increased?
Yeah, doubled.
Sure. Well, let's have Mrs. Reed and Mrs. Davis. Is Dr. Bennett here? Evan, any of our cousins?
So tonight's also a first for us, and I'm really excited about it, because I think it's a long time coming, and for the teachers that we're gonna recognize, I think, long overdue. And so about 12 years ago, when we started the five-year professional development plan, we really had no way for our veteran teachers, who have many decades of service, decades of attending training, decades of leading trainings, and being available to be mentors to the new teachers who come onboard to our teams, a way to really recognize their service. And so this year, we started a new way for veteran teachers to really be recognized as distinguished educators. And so it really values both their years of service, as well as their ongoing commitment to professional learning. So to earn the jacket, it's a combination of the number of years that you've been here, as well as the trainings that you've attended beginning this school year. There really is no way to recognize the years and decades of training and service that these teachers have given. So I know it's frustrating for many, and I just wanted to say that, because there's just no way to capture it correctly, but we also didn't wanna not start recognizing our veteran teachers that really show up every day, just as hungry as when they were new teachers, really wanting to reinvent themselves every year and do what's best for kids. And so we're really excited. This is our first cohort of distinguished educators that we're recognizing from our veteran teachers. And so I'd like to give a big congratulations to Mrs. Lori Avalos, McCullough Middle School Teacher. Perfect. I know. Mrs. Carrie Ravello, McCullough Middle School, English Language Arts and History Social Science Teacher. Dr. Ray Coriati, Los Alamitos High School, English. Mr. Phil Doran, Los Alamitos High School, English. And Mrs. Lori Francine, Los Alamitos High School, English. And Mrs. Lori Franzine, Los Alamitos High School, English. So, I don't think there are enough words to really convey to these distinguished educators how much their time and commitment to reinventing yourself and showing up to professional learning all of these years means, because you really are leading the way for our folks that come in on the new five-year professional development plan. Without you, we couldn't do that work, because we see them for a day, and then you take them onto your team for all the years that they're here, providing the daily guidance, the daily talks, bringing them into our culture. I mean, it's really priceless, and we're not able to really quantify the work that our teachers do in bringing in and helping prepare the new teachers that are hired here. So, thank you so much.
Don't be disappointed, five-year people. When Meg and I talked about this, we...
Oh, God, you're not to be honest with me.
So, there were no... Your commitment to the staff development and bringing in young words, so thank you. You have to say, "You are amazing." You're amazing.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Oh, Mrs. Kattuli would like to say something about...
Go ahead, take a picture. I can talk later. You're all happy. I just want to say, I don't know of another school district that has the five-year program we have for new teachers or anything at all, like our distinguished educators. I know all three of you have been teachers for a while. Some of you have had the joy of my children, some of you have had the joy of not having my children. And whether you are an experienced teacher or just starting at Los Al, you guys all work really hard, and then you go to PD Development, and then you learn the Los Al way, and then you try to incorporate it into your classroom. That is so far above and beyond a normal, what people would consider a normal teacher's schedule. And from the bottom of my heart, I know I speak for all of the board members, thank you so much for what you guys do in your classrooms every day for our students. You are the ones that make the difference. Thank you. Okay, we're now ready to take a recess to take pictures. So, if you haven't had your picture taken, you need to stay so we can.
So, Mrs. Grandin and family, and Gerchi and Mohinda, the Sethi family.
Other than that, we're taking a recess. Thank you so much. We'll be back in a moment.